First question, please read this question. If three plus root two is one root of the quadratic equation, A x square plus B x plus C equal to zero, A, B, C are real numbers, then the quadratic equation is ninety nine point nine nine percentage of the students will do a mistake in this question. What is the mistake they will do in this question? Listen carefully, right? This only because of the lack of conceptual clarity. If alpha and beta are the roots of the quadratic equation, what they will do is the form of the quadratic equation will be X square minus of alpha plus beta X plus alpha beta equal to zero. Alpha and beta are the roots, alpha plus beta is nothing but the sum of the roots and alpha beta is nothing but the product of the roots. So, the teacher has told that if three plus root two is one root, if three plus root two is one root, another root will be three minus root two. Right? Three minus root two. They will do like this. So, sum of the roots, if I call it as alpha, if I call it as beta, alpha plus beta will be plus root two minus root two cancel, it is nothing but six. Product of the roots will be three plus root two into three minus root two, nine minus two which is seven. So, they will tick mark the answer as X square minus six X plus seven equal and to zero. They will tick mark the answer to be option A. This is the mistake. You did a mistake in this question. You tick marked option A because you only read one concept. If alpha and beta are the roots of the quadratic expression or equation, then the equation is given by X square minus of alpha plus beta X plus alpha beta equal and to zero. You have not read the question again. This is a mistake. If anybody thought that answer is X square minus six X plus seven equal and to zero, this, there is an incorrect answer that you tick marked. Now let us see the concept. What is the concept? First for me, especially whenever you are solving a mathematical problem, the first thing you should do is you should read the question again. First, we will discuss the concept. What is the concept? Concept is A x square plus B x plus C equal and to zero. A x square plus B x plus C equal and to zero. If A, B, C, A and B are the coefficients of X square and X and C is the constant. If A, B, C are rational numbers, if A, B, C are rational numbers, then only if one root is P plus root Q. If one root is P plus root Q, another root will be P minus root Q. Directly, don't go ahead and substitute P minus root Q without understanding the concept. Again, I am repeating it. If the quadratic equation is A x square plus B x plus C equal and to zero. If the coefficients of X square, X and constant, only if they are rational numbers, only if the coefficients and constant are rational numbers, then only if one root is P plus root Q, another root will be P minus root Q. Another root will be P minus root Q. These only valid when A, B, C are rational numbers. When A, B, C are rational numbers. Here, A, B, C are real numbers. When I say A, B and C are real numbers, it could be a rational number or it could be an irrational number. This concept holds good only when they are rational numbers. But in the question he gave it as A, B and C are real numbers. So, answer for this question is you cannot determine the other root if one root is three plus root two. Other root by default it cannot be three minus root two. It is three minus root two only when the coefficients and the constant are rational numbers. In the question he gave it as A, B, C are real numbers. If they are real numbers, they can be rational numbers, they can be irrational numbers. Two choices are possible. Very, very important question. That is what I said. In workshop, we check every question. Seems like an easy question. Either it will teach you a new concept or probably it will teach you a better way of solving an problem which you already know it. Tick mark this important question. These are some of the questions which things like, which looks like very easy, but when you come out of the examination hall, you will realize that you did a mistake in these questions. These are the questions which will charm you, which will make you feel that yes, I know it, but there is a trap inside the question. The trap in this question is A, B and C should be given as rational numbers. For one root to be P plus root Q, another root will be P minus root Q. But here it is given as A, B and C are real numbers. A, B and C are real numbers. I hope the idea it is clear. Second question, read the another question. What is the product of the coefficients of reminder? What is the product of the coefficients of reminder? When X power hundred minus four X power ninety eight plus five X plus six divided by X square minus three X plus two. X square minus three X plus two. Generally, in your reminder theorem and factor theorem problem, what is the concept that you always studied if there is a polynomial function? If there is a polynomial function, if I divide by X minus A, wherever X is there, substitute A. Wherever X is there, substitute A. If it is divided by X plus A, wherever X is there, substitute minus A. Wherever X is there, substitute minus A. This something which you already know it. But this is when it is divided by a linear. But what is the question that it is given? Question that it is given, it is nothing but. Now we will do, to avoid a little calculation, we will take it as right, okay. So, I think calculation will be easier. It is divided by linear expression. Now it is divided by quadratic. It is divided by quadratic. Now let us see one by one. First write down this one concept which you already know it. This is popularly called as a reminder theorem. Now the another important concept, write down sir. Each and every question is extremely important. Suppose a number N is a numerical value. A number is divided by three. Reminders will be zero, one or two. When a number is divided by three, reminders will be zero, one or two. Let me replace the number with a polynomial expression, P of X. When it is divided by a quadratic expression, A x square plus B x plus C. A x square plus B x plus C, I will get either degree zero or degree one. So, the general form of these number will be, reminder will be P x plus Q. P x plus Q. If it is divided by three, the largest reminder possible it is two. If it is divided by two, an expression of degree two, the largest reminder possible is degree one. Please write down this important learning. When a polynomial expression is divided by an expression of degree N. When a polynomial expression is divided by an expression of degree N, answer is nothing but a generic expression of degree N minus one. Expression of degree N minus one. I hope the idea it is clear. Right? When it is divided by a cubic expression, reminder will be, the generic form will be a quadratic expression. If P is zero, P is zero, P is not equal and to zero. If P is equal and to zero, I will get a constant with a degree zero. If it is P not equal and to zero, I will get an expression with a degree one. When a polynomial expression is divided by degree two, I will get two possible reminders, either degree zero or degree one. When a polynomial expression is divided by a cubic expression, I will get three possible reminders, degree zero, degree one, degree two. I hope it is clear. So, when a number is divided by three, I will get three reminders. That is from zero to two. When a number is divided by five, I will get five reminders from zero to four. When a polynomial expression is divided by an expression degree two, I will get two reminders, either degree zero or degree one. Either degree zero or degree one. I hope the idea it is clear. Based upon this idea, let us solve this question. Every question is very, very close to the CAT level. You just cannot ignore a concept that you are learning from a question. These CAT workshops are specifically designed to enhance your score by teaching you all the possible concepts which may come in your CAT examination. I hope it is clear. Now let us solve this question. This is nothing but reminder, four X power. Sorry, the question is X power hundred, X power hundred minus four X power ninety eight plus five X plus six. It is divided by X minus one into X minus two. Okay? This is divided by a quadratic expression, reminder will be P x plus Q. When it is divided by an expression of degree N. Degree N, degree N minus one. So, this is nothing but X power hundred minus four X power ninety eight plus five X plus six equal and two. Now, seven divided by two, two, three is our six, reminder one. Two, three is our six, reminder one. Now see here, seven is nothing but two into three plus one. This is nothing but dividend. Dividend equal and to divisor into quotient. Dividend equal and to divisor into quotient plus reminder. Divisor into quotient plus reminder. Now see here, this is nothing but this is dividend, divisor, X minus one into X minus two into Q of X plus reminder, reminder is P x plus Q. I hope this idea till here it is clear. X power hundred minus four X power ninety eight plus five X plus six is X minus one into X minus two into Q of X plus P x plus Q. Now we will write, solve it in the next slide. Now see here. X power hundred minus four X power ninety eight plus five X plus six. It is nothing but X minus one into X minus two into Q of X plus P x plus Q, P x plus Q. What do we require in the question? We require the product of the coefficients of the reminder. We require P into Q. That means if we find the values of P and Q, we will get the answer. If X equal and to one, one minus four plus five plus six, eleven plus one, twelve, twelve minus four, eight. Eight equal and to one minus one, zero. Zero into anything, zero. Plus P plus Q, P plus Q. I hope it is clear. So, this is nothing but P plus Q equal and to eight. P plus Q equal and to eight. Next, if I take X equal and to two. If X equal and to two, it is two power hundred, four raised to square into two power eight in two power hundred, five twos are ten, ten plus six, sixteen equal and to two P plus Q. I hope this idea it is clear. These both are also cancelled. So, the next thing is two P plus Q is nothing but sixteen. So, if I subtract P equal and to eight, if P equal and to eight, Q equal and to zero. P is eight, Q equal and to zero. So, P into Q, eight into zero, answer is nothing but zero. I hope the idea it is clear. All the learning from question number two is when a polynomial expression is divided by a expression of degree N, reminder will be an expression of degree N minus one. N minus one. Because it is divided by two, the reminder is of the form P x plus Q. I hope the idea it is clear. If it is divided by a cubic, reminder will be a quadratic expression. If it is divided by an expression of degree four, reminder will be an expression of degree three. Very, very important learning, product of the coefficients of the reminder. So, P into Q I have to do. I hope it is clear. For us to learn little much more efficiently, let me solve one more problem. Let me solve one more problem. I hope the idea it is clear. Another question, please write down. There is a polynomial expression. There is a polynomial expression, it is divided by X minus nineteen. Reminder is nineteen and the same polynomial expression. Whenever I think I can create a question, I will create a question. When it is divided by X minus nineteen, reminder is nineteen nine, nineteen nine. What is the reminder? What is the reminder? When it is divided by X minus nineteen nine and X minus nineteen. Very, very good question. Based upon this, I will do one more question. There is a polynomial expression is given, a polynomial expression when divided by X minus nineteen nine. Reminder is nineteen. When divided by X minus nineteen, reminder is nineteen nine. When divided by X minus nineteen nine, X minus nineteen, what is the reminder? It is divided by a quadratic expression. If it is divided by a quadratic expression, the generic form will be linear. It is A x plus B. Just now dividend is nothing but divisor into quotient, X minus nineteen nine into X minus nineteen, divisor into quotient, Q of X plus reminder. It is nothing but A x plus B, A x plus B. This is a traditional method. Then I will discuss the optimal method. P of X equal and to X minus nineteen nine, X minus nineteen it is into Q of X plus A x plus B. Now see here, when it is divided by X minus nineteen nine. Reminder is nineteen. So, P of nineteen nine equal and to nineteen. P of nineteen nine equal and to nineteen. Here also it is P of nineteen equal and to nineteen. P of nineteen equal and to nineteen nine. When P of X is divided by X minus A, reminder will be P of A. So, instead of X, substitute nineteen nine. P of nineteen nine should be nineteen. P of nineteen should be nineteen nine. So, let me substitute it. If I substitute it, what will happen? If I substitute X is nineteen nine, nineteen nine minus nineteen nine zero. So, it is nothing but nineteen nine A plus B, nineteen nine A plus B. It is nothing but nineteen. Next one, it is nineteen. So, this is nothing but P of nineteen. Nineteen A plus B, it is nothing but nineteen nine. I hope the idea it is clear. Nineteen nine A plus B is nineteen and nineteen A plus B equal and to nineteen nine. So, if I do it, suppose nineteen nine A minus nineteen. Eighty A equal and to minus eighty. A is nothing but minus one. If A is nothing but minus one, minus A plus B equal and to nineteen. B is nothing but one one eight. B is nothing but one one eight. So, what is the answer? A x plus B. A x plus B is nothing but minus X plus one one eight. Answer for this question is minus X plus one one eight. I hope you got an idea of how to solve this kind of questions. Whenever it is divided by a quadratic expression, reminder is nothing but a linear, A x plus B. I used reminder theorem concept one. P of nineteen nine equal and to nineteen. P of nineteen equal and to nineteen nine. Substituted and got the answer. But there is a better way to solve this question. What is that better way to solve this question? We will see Anil Naier's way to solve the question. Then I will do one more question. Now, how if this question is given to you, how I will get the answer first? Let us see. First, I will do a number system question, then I will correlate it with an algebra question. Algebra question. Suppose a number is divided by, number is divided by five. Positive reminder, it is four. A number is divided by seven. Positive reminder, it is six. What is the form of the number? What is the form of the number? A number is divided, number when divided by five, positive reminder is four. Number when divided by seven, positive reminder is six. What is the form of the number? Positive reminders are not same. What is the negative reminder? Four when divided by five, five ones are five, negative reminder minus one. Six, seven ones are seven, negative reminder it is minus one. So, the number is divided by five and seven. So, it is nothing but L C M of five and seven. In both the cases, what is the common reminder that I am getting? Minus one. This is something which most of you know it in number system. A number is divided by five, positive reminder is four, number divided by seven. Positive reminder, it is six. Positive reminders are different. If the positive reminders are different, try to see if the negative reminders are same. Five ones are five, negative reminder minus one. Seven ones are seven, negative reminder minus one. So, negative reminders are same. The form of the number will be L C M of five comma seven into K minus one. Let me replace N with P of X. This is P of X. First, it is divided by X minus nineteen. Positive reminder will be nineteen nine. Then it is divided by X minus nineteen nine. Positive reminder will be nineteen. Positive reminders in both the cases, they are different. Let me check whether the negative reminders are same. How I got minus one? Four minus five is minus one. Six minus seven is minus one. So, this is nothing but nineteen nine minus of X minus nineteen. Nineteen minus of X minus nineteen nine. So, this is nothing but minus X plus one one eight. This is also nothing but minus X plus one one eight. Negative reminders are also same in these algebra question. So, what is the form of that number? P of X is nothing but L C M of X minus nineteen into X minus nineteen nine into K. Negative reminder is minus X plus one one eight. This P of X is divided by X minus nineteen into X minus nineteen nine. So, this will be perfectly divisible, remaining it is nothing but minus X plus one one eight. Remaining it is nothing but minus X plus one one eight. I hope the idea it is clear. Even not only in number system, the logic of positive reminder same, negative reminder same. Positive or negative reminders not same. Here also you can use it. The same concept can also be applied in reminder theorem in algebra based problems. Positive reminder nineteen nine, nineteen. Negative reminder will be four minus five is minus one. Six minus seven is minus one. L C M of five comma seven into K minus one. So, L C M of X minus nineteen, X minus nineteen nine K. What is the negative reminder? Nineteen nine minus of X minus nineteen. Nineteen nine minus of X minus nineteen nine. So, answer is minus X plus one one eight. If you understand that negative reminder is same for this question, just to take the negative reminder, that itself will be the answer. That itself will be the answer. I hope the idea it is clear. I hope it is clear. The idea it is clear, right? Next question. One more example, we will do it. It is not in solving the problems. It is learning concept through each and every problem that I want each and every student to focus more on. Just solving this question, if you want the question and an answer, there are tons of YouTube channels where you can go and watch it. Looking into the question, can we create some more branches to that concept and create as many questions as possible? One more question. By understanding this one, let me solve another example. Question is reminder one. P of X when divided by X minus one, reminder it is two. Reminder one, when P of X is divided by X minus two, reminder it is nothing but one. So, what is the reminder when it is divided by X minus one and X minus two? Immediately it should strike you. Instead of writing the reminder as A x plus B, check it out whether the negative reminders are same for these number. So, P of X, P of X first it is divided by X minus one. Positive reminder it is two. Then it is divided by X minus two. Positive reminder it is one. So, the negative reminder is nothing but two minus of X minus one. One minus of X minus two. This is nothing but, in both the cases, negative reminder it is nothing but minus X plus three. What is P of X will become? Both it is divisible by X minus one and X minus two into some quotient, reminder is minus X plus three when divided by X minus one, X minus two. So, X minus one, X minus two into any number, it is perfectly divisible. So, what is the answer for this question? Answer for this question is nothing but minus X plus three. Minus X plus three. Beautiful question. We have learnt a concept in that question. We solved application of that concept in the question. Then we have seen some more observations. Can the negative reminder be same? If the negative reminder is same, how to get the answer first without using the concept? What is the concept? When a polynomial function is divided by an expression of degree N, answer reminder will be an expression of degree N minus one. Second one, I hope the idea it is clear. It is clear. Now third question. Now, before we solve this question, let us see some important concepts. Concept, concepts. Suppose for example, X square minus five X plus six equal and to zero. X equal and to two comma three. Two and three are considered to be the roots for these equation. Root is that value which will satisfy the equation, which will satisfy the equation by making P of X equal and to zero, P of alpha equal and to zero. If alpha is the root, alpha is the root. So, this can be written as two square minus five into two plus six, four plus six, ten, ten minus ten equal and to zero. That means two is a root, F of two equal and to zero, F of two equal and to zero. If three is a root, three square minus five into three plus six equal and to zero. So, F of three is a root, F of three is a root. F of two equal and to zero, F of three equal and to zero. And two also will satisfy. That means if alpha and beta are the roots, what will happen? F of alpha equal and to zero, F of beta equal and to zero. If I substitute alpha in place of X, this equation will become Alpha square minus five alpha plus six equal and to zero. Beta square minus five beta plus six equal and to zero. Make a note of this point. If alpha and beta are the roots of the quadratic equation, F of alpha equal and to zero, F of beta equal and to zero. A value is called a root if F of value is equal and to zero. A value is said to be a root if F of value equal and to zero. F of two equal and to zero, F of three equal and to zero. Please write down these important key point. If alpha and beta are the roots of the equation, F of alpha equal and to zero and F of beta equal and to zero. This is the first key point and second key point. All these key points, I am going to use it. Second key point, if there is an equation, A x square plus B x plus C equal and to zero. Alpha plus beta, it is nothing but minus B by A. Alpha beta, it is nothing but C by A. Alpha beta, it is nothing but C by A. A not equal and to zero, A not equal and to zero, A not equal and to zero. Now, important learnings from this question. If the equation is of the form A x square plus C equal and to zero, what is missing? Coefficient of X is missing. Coefficient of X is zero. If the coefficient of X is zero, that means B is equal and to zero. If B is equal and to zero, if the coefficient of X is zero, sum of the roots should be equal and to zero. Please write down. Sum of the roots should be equal and to zero. If the question is of the form A x square plus B x equal and to zero, what is missing? Constant is missing. That means if the con- Constant is missing, that means if the constant is equal and to zero, if the constant is equal and to zero. If the constant is equal and to zero, product of the roots is equal and to zero. Product of the roots is equal and to zero. Product of the roots is equal and to zero, just to make a note of these two important key points. If the coefficient of X is zero, some of the roots will be zero, if the constant it is zero. That means the product of the roots will be equal and to zero, product of the roots will be equal and to zero. May not be that highly useful for a quadratic, but if I increase the degree from two to three, four and five. All these concepts are extremely important, that's my next slide.